I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And then we have to do the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Um, because Terry's on Zoom, if, when you do make any motions, if you could say your last name when you make your motion. That would make a lot easier. Thank you.
And do we have minutes to review? To approve?
Um, they were in your packet.
From the email?
Yes.
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
There are no written minutes. It's the recording that you are approving as the official record.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minute as reported from our meeting last week.
Just announce your last name.
I, Fix, make a motion to approve the recorded minutes from last week.
I'll second the motion. Suzanne Allen seconded the motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of approving the motion, uh, the minutes as is, reported from last meeting?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The minutes have been approved. The next item on the agenda is to develop a meeting schedule. We put this one together, we've scheduled one meeting and it was for today's meeting. Uh, tentatively put it together at four to seven. Um, I would like to go ahead and get some meetings scheduled, at least for the next two weeks. Uh, it looks like it may take at least two meetings per week with the same time slot in order for us to accomplish, uh, some, get them, some things done. So, I was gonna suggest Tuesday and Thursdays for the next two weeks from four to seven at here at the city, if that's possible. But I would need someone to make a motion for, so that we could discuss it.
Do we need to put the ending time, I think Terry said last time, you just need to put the beginning time of the meeting and that's what they posed. Is that right, Terry?
That is correct. Your meetings-
Yeah, so just for-
They don't have to go until seven or they can go over.
Okay. But is that asking-
Say that again. Sorry, I was getting my calendar out. I think you need to ask if that works and then you need to make a motion.
Yeah. I would need someone to make a motion to consider those meetings and then second it and then bring it under discussion.
For the next two weeks?
Yes.
So, I would move to meet on Tuesday and Thursday for the next two weeks, beginning at four o'clock. Ken Jones.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion on the meeting.
Okay.
And, and Claire.
And is there a discussion?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Chairman, Sonny Culver. Does everyone think we might be meeting that long? Does anyone think?
I, I think-
Keep starting a little bit later, thirty minutes later.
Like four-thirty, you mean?
If we're gonna-
I can do either four or four-thirty.
Four-thirty's way better for me.
Okay.
I have, well, not alternate, but do you know to start wrapping things up?
It's, uh, more for staff than anybody else. I mean, can staff start at four-thirty? Yeah, I would amend my motion to start the meetings at four-thirty on Tuesday and Thursday for the next two weeks.
Who's for-
Ken Jones. And so we're gonna have to have the second accepted that amendment.
Is there a second to amend that motion?
Well, the person that made the second, and they have to do that.
Yeah, if they want, yeah. You will accept the amendment to the motion?
Uh, I, Chairman Fix will second the motion to change the meeting times from four-thirty to whatever on Tuesday.
From four to four-thirty?
From four to four-thirty on Tuesday.
Is there any discussion on that motion?
I can vote on that motion.
Okay. And do we need to push, do they have dates listed on that for this or?
We'll find that out.
Okay.
Twenty-eighth, thirtieth, fifth, and seventh.
Yeah, the twenty-eighth, thirtieth, and then the fifth and seventh of December, four-thirty meeting. It's here at the City Hall.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Can we, I allow the mayor to, did you need to have an announcer or did you need to speak?
No, I'm, I'm here just to see how you get organized. If you have any questions, I'm not gonna stay necessarily for the whole meeting. I'm here as a resource if you-
So, the next item on the agenda had to do with establishing subcommittees to review each particular item. Um, and that was just a, a discussion. Other options, since we're all here as a group and we're planning these meetings, would be to consider going through every single item as a group ourselves. Uh, there would have to be a motion to approve each section, and we would approve that, discuss it, and then move on to the next one. And then, if we have the ability to get through every single one of them, we could, we could do every, all seventeen that are listed currently on the- There was also some discussion, there are some that are clearly, um, I believe more complicated and were gonna require more discussion. And we could even somehow develop a way where we could save some of those, get some of the eas- early, the, uh, easier ones out of the way first, get some things accomplished, and then move forward.
Mr. Chairman, Sonny Culver, just have a question. Did, did everyone get an opportunity to read through the entire thing and make any notes previous to today? That, um, maybe that would help decide how we wanna move forward.
I read through everything.
I also read through, I made some notes.
So, I mean, Kenny, you've looked at it, Marty, you've looked at it, Suzanne, Kenny, we've all, we've all had a chance to go through it. I, I just made a highlight of some of the ones that I thought were gonna be a lot more complicated. You know, our Article Two, obviously with some of the terms and things like that, it's gonna be a big one. And then the six, which is the finance, taxation is also a big one. And those, I think we need probably more time to go through them before we start discussing those. But there are some of the more straightforward ones-
Right.
That look good. That, but we would need a motion for somebody to either take on one of them now and discuss it a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna clarify what you said at the beginning. So, if we were to split up or stay together, we don't have to go line by line, everything that's in the draft charter and vote to approve or disapprove all of those, right? We can have an informal process where we say, does anybody have objections to the language written here? And you say, nothing other than maybe grammar check or something.
Right.
And so, no, that one looks fine to me. And then we just informally move on to the next one. We aren't accepting it as a group, we're just accepting that later, when the staff prepares an updated charter, they would just leave that one as is. And if we had some objections to it, we could either say, okay, what are those objections or changes that you propose? And we could all say, do, you know, does a majority of people agree with that and leave it in? Or say, this is too hard, let's set this one aside, and maybe that one will need further discussion later. We can do any of that, informally, right? I don't think we have to vote on each one.
At some point, though, we will have to vote on the entire charter.
Yes.
At some point, maybe we wanna go through and, but, and, that would be as a group, somebody would have to make a motion that we vote on them individually or however.
Yeah, so I, I guess my point was, if you wanted to, as the chairman, break us into groups and really dig in on the individual items, we could do that. If you didn't want to do that and we stayed together as a big group, we could just hit each one and say, does this one need a lot of discussion so we can set it aside for a subcommittee? Or can we just talk about this now? You can do any of that, right? Okay, it, it's more informal.
But I would leave that up to the group, and then I think we have to incorporate the city if we're breaking up into subgroups, 'cause they would divide then.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Um, we had recommended how to break into subcommittees, and that's what the group chose to do, of course, based off our areas of expertise. For example, I would be with certain sections, page over the finance, taxation, section, the city council would work with ordinance sections, for example. Of course, it's certainly, the group, whether you guys wanna do it, if you guys want to break into subcommittees, we'll be glad to work with you for our areas of expertise. If you wanna do it as a group as a whole, we'll certainly be glad to work with you as well. Or it'd help you guys in a way we can.
You know, I think it would be nice if we just, if we got going and we see if we need to go into subcommittees.
Right.
And we don't know what, we haven't done anything. If we get going and we see, oh, this is going really well, maybe we don't need subcommittees. If we get bogged down on something really small, then we are gonna need it. So, we're not gonna know until we know. So, maybe we could begin something.
May I? May I? I, I like that, yes.
I feel like we're not completely starting from scratch. I mean, we have a, an amazing sense to, to start from. So, like Mr. Jones suggested, this is, um, Susan Fix, by the way, talking. We don't, we're not recreating the wheel. So, we look, we can bypass a lot of this stuff and vote on the things that we feel need to be changed from the original draft.
Yep.
And, and I think that vote can be, okay, so we all agree, as of today, we'll leave that that way. And then when we have the final draft, we make a motion to either accept it all or make changes, right? Yeah, I like that.
I like that, too, because some things, um, are different from charter to charter, and ultimately, when you're comparing it to our charter, it's still different. So, I think, I like that idea of not just, um, rubber stamping one section at a time. It, it has to be taken at the whole.
So, then we would need to, uh, someone would need to move or make a motion to propose to do the way you wanna do it.
So, so, so the fact that we're not breaking up into subcommittees, I think, I think you as the chair can just say, okay, let's start reviewing this document. And, and we're not accepting anything, we're not approving anything, we're not making any motions, we're just, you're just saying, let's start going through this.
Let's just start reviewing it.
So, then we can scratch that establishment of subcommittee.
Yeah, I think a lot of these things are put on there just in case we want to-
They will leave it on there, right?
You can't do that unless the agenda says you might do that.
Yeah, we can maybe do, if we need to do subcommittees, we can do them later, let's find out what we're going to be doing.
Which means we could still leave it on the draft, because we may talk about it.
Who wants to start the discussion?
So, how do you wanna do it, Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Do you wanna start? Article one?
Yeah.
Yeah, why not?
Well, I think, do you have to finish, uh, per the minutes? Do you have to finish establishing subcommittees?
No. I think it's just, it can be in any order.
Table that- Yes, city, Mr. Cityman.
Mr. Chairman, on the items, certain of the subcommittees, you can just shoot the, table that item and you'll take action on it.
Do we need to vote on that, to table it? Do we need a motion to table that item? And then, yeah.
Okay. Um, um, Miss, um, Susan Fix will make a motion to table, um, Item C, uh, the current agenda, establishing subcommittees and appointing the head of secretary to a later date.
That's my second.
Ken Jones, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of table the subcommittee point nine?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I just have one more small recommendation.
The mayor's over there.
I'm sorry, Chairman, Chairman.
Whoa.
Maybe wordsmithing at this point isn't the best way to go. If you have grammatical errors or things, at the end, we can all say, hey, I think that apostrophe should be changed to a comma, or whatever, whatever it said. Let's just focus on the issue itself rather than wordsmithing at this point. Because we have attorneys who are really good at wordsmithing.
We already have that on, uh, the agenda, the adoption of the draft charter, and we can just begin discussion on that.
Okay.
I would, go ahead, Sonny.
Also, Mr. Chairman, Sonny Culver, um, I don't believe at our other meeting, we ever adopted the rules and procedures for freeholders, that just kinda governs our meetings. Um, and that is still on here, I don't think we ever adopted that, didn't we?
We did not.
That's what I thought, it was a bit of a brief thing to do that. Basically, following our, the order of rules, which we're, we're doing a pretty good job of doing that. But, uh, we haven't adopted that yet.
Terry, talking about this, uh-
No, I'm talking about this.
The procedures, which is E on the agenda. So, then we would need to, um, table the adoption of the draft charter. And then move to approve the adoption of the rules and procedures before we could do that.
We could move around the agenda, I think, in different orders. You're, you're not bound by the orders that you generally run. So, you have to discuss, Mr. Chairman, to go to a particular item and, and, you know, maybe do them.
As far as looking at item, we-
Okay, so as far as the rules and procedures, has everybody had a chance to look at this one?
Go ahead, Mickey. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, we adopt the rules and procedures for board of freeholders to govern our meetings.
Zero second.
And Claire's second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting the rules and procedures?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, that's been approved. So, we'll go back to the discussion of the draft charter. Does anybody wanna start? Martin, do you wanna start discussion on?
Call me, Martin, that's cool. No, I just think we should do it in the way we have it. Let's start with our Article One.
Yep, I agree.
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir, can I make one comment?
Yes.
Um, for freeholders, one thing I would like to apologize, I understand that what you got was the redline version on your flash drive, you should've gotten the clean. I'm gonna be honest, I don't know how that happened, you should've gotten the clean, we worked through it together anyway. So, we can put those on the screen so you can see it as well, if you sit on the screen, if that helps you certainly do that. You will see in your email, if, if we have them already, you have received in the clean version. That version is the version that was, that you viewed and et cetera. So, again, you've got the clean one coming. Uh, I would recommend, sir, that we work from the clean version, not the redline version.
Who did the redline on this?
Who did the review?
Was this a legal redline?
That's correct.
Okay.
Where was the original from? Was it a copy and paste from somebody else's charter and then you redlined that? Or was it something staff prepared and then you redlined that? Because I li- I like the fact that you redlined it. I can see things that were removed, but I, I don't understand how they were in there in the first place. Was it cut and paste from somebody else's charter? Okay. I'll leave here for a little bit.
Why?
Well, one thing, I'm just a careful person, I can serve it, which is what you want. Um, so, the, the point is, which I think has been already referred to in this meeting prior, you got pound medical thing, you can go wherever you want. The redlines, I do believe you're looking at redlines from another city's charter, but I don't think they're a complete redline. I think it's like a later version after several versions have been attempted. So- That makes perfect sense. Yeah, they're good, they're good. Okay, yeah, I, yeah, they're like the last round. And so, the docu- so, there's, if, the document, if you took out all the redlines, you would not have another city's charter. You did have another city's charter, rounds and rounds of redlines that are already attempted. So-
Which city?
But there are several cities, so, certain sections.
Some of them are like very familiar, you can tell that they have some copy and-
Some of it's true. But, but there are some sections, so, the, the existing charters around the state, there's language that you'll find in, you know, twelve, or fifteen, right? So, different sections.
Where this came from?
That's from the week of-
But what, what's- Question for the, um, was, was some of this redline done on the advice of the legal council, that they should, should not be?
Some of it was done by legal council, some of it was done by city staff. And so, that's why I'm saying, is it's not, you know, those redli- redlines aren't the complete story of what was removed or what was added to any particular charter. For the most part, I think it's, I think the original building block was good here, that's my understanding. Some things were added to it, some things were removed, but not showing that protection. Some things were done by legal recommendation, some by staff recommendation. So, at the end of the day, I think it's a, it's a comprehensive, it's a document that's supposed to be helpful to you, but coming from legal, but also coming from finance, coming from administration. So, just to get us rolling.
Get it rolling.
I, I only had a couple of questions on all of Article One. My first question is, the deleted section on page two, the deleted section that's, that used to say, "May compel the owner or occupant of grounds to remove dirt, rubbish, weeds, etc." That, that was removed, and I thought that would've been a good thing to have in the charter, was if staff can tell me why the section was removed that said the city may compel. And basically, it's people who are not keeping up with codes, right? There are people who are code violators. And it says, "The city may compel them to remove that dirt, rubbish, and, and all of that." Everybody see what I'm talking about in the margin?
Yes.
They're removed for, oh, you don't have, you don't have a redline version, you don't see it. Okay, so, in the redline version, there was a section removed that says, and I'll read it, because everybody doesn't have the same thing.
Which, which section?
Could you identify where you're beginning? Could you identify, please, where you're beginning?
Paragraph five.
Art, paragraph five, Article One.
Article one.
In Article One.
Okay, thank you.
It says, "The city shall have exclusive jurisdiction to control and regulate the use and enjoyment of its streets, alleys, public grounds, and rights of way." Okay, that's what it says now, right? Are, are we all in the same place? Got that? No?
Don't know.
Okay, I'm sorry, section three, paragraph, paragraph five, my fault. Section three, paragraph five.
Powers of the city.
So, it's, it's one sentence, that's all. "City shall have exclusive jurisdiction to control." Everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, what was removed from that, one of the things, I'm sorry, in the second section, paragraph six, the, at the beginning of that, it used to say, "May compel the owner or occupant of grounds to remove dirt, rubbish, weeds there from, from the sidewalks adjacent thereto, and in his default, may authorize removal of destruction thereof by some officer of the city at the expense of some, some owner or occupant." So, the city has these rights to say, you are in violation of city code, we're going to remove that dirt, we're gonna come back later and charge you for the removal of that dirt, or we'll place a lien on your property, right? The city has that right. And we may or may not need, wanna leave it in the charter. My question is, why do you not want that in the charter? It was in there and you have chosen to remove that, why is that? So, that was done by, Mr. Estes, that's the league, the attorney that you met last time.
Okay.
I don't know what his exact logic is, I can look and I can give you a better answer at the next meeting. Uh, what I would suggest, just from looking at your rights, is the power that the city has. I'll tell you one thing that does vary based on charter authority, is the ability of a closing. Cities have a limited ability to impose leasings based on statute, and so, some cities' charters need to be adjusted. So, so, to, to get us moving along, I will say, I'm not gonna make a recommendation, and all I wanted to know is why that was removed. And I would say, I would like at our next meeting, or whenever we need to discuss this again, that legal counsel tell us why. Because I like the city to have the ability to force people to remove things that are code violations and to lien their property if they don't. And if that's already in, in state statute and we don't need to repeat it, then just tell me that. If there's no reason to put it here, just tell me that. I'm just, I, I don't wanna take it out because we don't want the right to be able to do that. What, what I'll tell you right now is that the key is the lien part and not the removal part. And I'll get you in more detail. That would be perfect, 'cause I know a lot of cities do that, and it's the only way you get property cleaned up, because you lien them, they sell it, you get the money, you get paid back. That's, that's how that works.
Terry, do we just need to have that put on the agenda for next meeting?
Let's just make a list of things that we have, we need legal opinion on or staff opinion on, and that's the one I'm thinking. I think it can be part of the continuing discussion. You guys know what you're led to be here as you continue.
Okay, so we need to have that, okay?
Can I?
Yes.
Like, how can we have a dialogue with all of us?
Oh.
Yeah, so, so that was my question, and I, I personally would like to have staff tell us why that was taken out. But anybody else, if you think that it was good to take it out or not good?
Here, let's, Suzanne.
Trying to figure out how all of us will work together. Um, it seems as though things were, when I was reading through the draft, things were taken out here and put here, or they were taken out here and put over here. Is that kind of the case with this one, where it was taken out of paragraph six and maybe included in paragraph three? Or do we really need to, like, wait until, by the next time we need to have that?
Yeah, if, if you're telling me, number three covers it, you don't need all that language, that's perfect.
But I'm not, like, from the legal side of things?
No, from them, yeah.
So, you wish to wait for them to apply that by then?
If they wanna give that opinion now, like, you don't need that because it's already covered in three, I'm good with that.
Okay.
I, that's just a question I have.
And, yes.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion, sir?
Yes.
I think it might be easier if we started the very first section and we worked through.
Yeah, I think-
Let's say, for example, let's, let's leave this matter from the first. That we might say, um, let's start with Article One, Section One, if there are any questions to Section One, if there's not, then we'll go to Section Two.
Okay.
And just work our way down the document. And I just wanna be clear, if everybody's looking at the redline, everybody's looking at the clean, we wanna make sure all of them sign one.
Whoever was on the-
I have a clean one on my, my, my drive.
Mine has redline.
Mine is redline.
It maybe is how you're viewing it, in your word.
Yeah, you can view the redline or a clean version, probably.
An apple?
You view the markup?
Yeah.
So, let's just start then from Article One, Section One, does anybody have any questions on that? Incorporation?
There's only three behind you as well, yeah, it's up there.
Yeah.
Seemed fine to me.
Um, I don't have any questions, but, um, Article One, Section One, under incorporation. Um, I, I just added, you need to put, uh, in parentheses, the city, in order for you to refer to it as the city afterwards.
We have those definitions sections in the last page that defines what the city is.
Yeah, in the definitions.
And the reason I did that is we did it, um, with council. We defined in the next paragraph, the council in parentheses, and said we refer to it that way, so I thought the consistency was mistaken.
Just moving along, Section Two. Any others? I still have the question on the redline, and I would be curious, which one, like, the stuff was redlined for legal or was it redlined just because?
That was redlined, the red lines, you're currently looking at some most of them.
Legal.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was redlined there seemed to me to be more permission statements than anything else. I think that necessarily-
The council did not think it was appropriate for them to put that language in the charter and, and in this section of the charter. It was not advisable either, for, for a variety of reasons.
Legal counsel said that? That's it?
I don't know.
How about powers of the city, Section Three? Was that the one Kenny, your section was in?
No, different from that.
You had brought up about?
Yeah, way down the middle.
There was a question?
Yeah, so I had that question on.
Yeah. Suzanne?
Um, I remember specifically Joe saying, "We don't want to put ARSs into the charter," and then we put ARSs into the charter. So I was just trying to clarify, um, if that was indeed something you wanted to quote in the charter, the Arizona Revised Statute Title IX, in case something was to change with Title IX later, and then it would affect our charter.
Where, what section?
I'm sorry, section three, A, A.
Three A.
That would be like.
Second to left line.
So, that's a, that's a very good point, um, and, yes, we would recommend you don't put individual sections in the charter, because there are new changes now, and the titles have been reorganized. It's very uncommon, Title IX will likely remain Title IX for a long time, but, um, I think that's, there's a little bit of a difference between both of them. It's not revised on a regular schedule or anything like that. It is possible that it could be reorganized and get a different title on it. But that's, that's kind of the biggest division within the Arizona Revised Statute, so that's kind of the most general reference that you can make to, to state statutes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that point. I have no issues with it, but just based on Joe's comments last time, I wanted to clarify that for this time around.
Better fact, it's just reported state statute.
I did notice that state statutes were referred to in here. Any thoughts on that?
I like that.
State statutes?
So, just in generic, it just says, "According to state statute."
Yeah.
More generic, the more correct.
Yeah, generic.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
On A1, disposal of real property, um, it, it says that basically the council can dispose of any, and also land, dispose of land sale. Does, does that, can they do that without a vote of the, the city? They, they could just decide to sell some of the land that we own?
Again, that would be a legal thing.
I'm sorry, I was taking note on the last comment. The question is, do they all land sales?
Well, it says they can dispose of real property, and one of the things that says they can dispose of is land.
Sell, dispose of any real.
To sell land, if we own, if the, if the city can sell the land we own. We're selling the land right now.
They have that.
In state statute, it is a value threshold, certain, uh, a certain value, you have to kick it to the motors, but small sales of land, the city can do with it.
Okay.
Want to clarify.
Thank you.
So, it sounds like what you just said is, this is just saying the city has power to sell land. How that's done could be addressed later in the charter. It could say, "Things required by ordinance, sale of land." If, if this group wanted to propose that, right? Okay.
In state statutes, yes.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I will just say, it, that's the question that I had, Suzanne has clarified for me. I think number three covers everything that was deleted previously, so I don't have that question anymore. Yeah, you don't have, I mean, that, it, I think it covers it, number three.
I think it does, too.
Yeah.
We should have clarified that.
I'm also not an attorney, so.
Save us time, isn't it? Pay the legal fees.
Um, I just, uh, section two, G, we identified bike paths, and I think there's some, um, that those paths are also cart paths. Is there some reason to put the word cart in there as well, so that we?
Section three, paragraph two, is that where we are?
Yeah, G, it says bike path, or is there necessary? But I thought we made an ordinance, that no golf cart can let on the bike path any longer.
There are a lot of the pathways. The pathways and sidewalks.
And then there's golf.
Pathways, you can put a golf cart on, sidewalks.
So, the pink path, like, you can still ride your golf cart on?
It's all, all the wide, basically, it's all like, if it's wide, it's pink, yeah, you can let the pathway, you can put a golf cart on it. If it's narrower, or it's not pink, sidewalks.
We can highlight that, put cart, and if necessary, that can be changed when we go through it. Uh, anything on the stuff that was deleted, on that red line?
I have a question on number, uh, section three, A, paragraph two. Um, is it typical for the city to require someone developing to put in all the infrastructure?
That in this section?
Um, it says, "require all persons, firms, or corporations responsible for new physical development in the city to provide or furnish, or pay a fee for furnishing A, B, C, D." I just want to make sure that that was.
That's something.
That was.
Yeah, it is something we should do. In other words, we should not bear that expense, basically.
Is that current, do you know, does anybody know that?
I didn't hear what you read.
Well, let's, let's make sure. It says, they have the power to, is how that, it starts up in A, and then, they have the power to require all persons to do that. This doesn't say, "You shall do that." It says they have the power to.
Provide infrastructure.
Our side of infrastructure.
Provide infrastructure.
So, the city could choose to provide the infrastructure, or require the developer?
Yeah, that's pretty standard, that they would do that.
Yeah, I think it's pretty standard, just to say in here, "The city has the power to do that," so that nobody can ever question it later.
Got it.
As we struck through, uh, require architectural and site plan review, is there a reason why we struck that? Okay, so it's not.
But that's somewhere else in the city building, yeah, city ordinance.
Oh, but, uh.
Anything else going down on the struck stuff? How about section B? Section three, section?
Um, hang on, I'm sorry. Okay, section, same, same section.
So, section three, but we're now in B. And the charter mentioned a particular power shall not be constructed to be exclusive or to restrict.
Oh, speaking of paragraph four.
Paragraph. Anything?
I don't know where we are, I'm sorry.
Well, I should, well, that's right, right. Okay, so prior to that.
Paragraph B and C of section three, the bottom, the last two.
Okay, so prior to that, just following what was sort of section three.
Yes.
Um, what is now paragraph four, "May prescribe a number of times and notices to be published, the place of publication."
That was one that was struck.
No, it's still in there.
Or at least not online.
The numbering changed.
Got it.
Oh, that was, don't worry about it, it's a grammatical thing, I'll find it out later.
Anything else in section three?
Um, paragraph five, "City council will be forced to take actions to restrict vehicular traffic." Does that tie our hands too much, to say we're forced to? Or would it?
Forced is a bad word, where, where are you at?
Paragraph five.
Oh, wait, which article?
She's still in.
We're still on B.
Yeah, that's.
We're still on section three.
I haven't, I haven't gone, I'm still in section three.
Okay.
Number five, paragraph five.
Mm-hmm.
She was having a number of times.
Forced has been redlined, because it wasn't redlined on this.
It's just, uh, it's, it's, everybody's got, has gotten a new version. It's called clean. If you haven't before, it's not clean.
So, all of the things I've did for the last eight hours?
So, I have the red line version, and number five is still in there. This is saying it has been deleted since I got it.
No, you can just hit it on here, and it'll build a new version.
What, has this been redlined again and revised since we got it?
Number, number five, the red line, the, the document you have, called clean, is really not clean. It was a red line.
Right.
The red lines were not taken out.
All right.
I just.
What you're looking at is number five, it's still there, that there was a second sentence that's not removed.
Okay, so that is.
But there's just one.
So, your question is about the remaining sentence?
Okay. I know, I guess it's probably been removed.
No, see it in the cheese bubble to the right, instead of delete it?
But this is still in there, and is this the question you have, on this that's still remaining?
She has a question about the part that's in the top bubble that says deleted.
Yes.
It wasn't additional sentence.
Deleted.
The reason for it needs to be deleted. What's remaining will give us the authority to regulate the use of our streets.
Right, okay.
If, if somebody has a, their thumb drive is different, are they able to turn it back in and get the new?
I emailed it to you, um, on the email that you were.
Okay.
Yeah, if you have a thumb drive, as long as the staff will quick forward.
We can bring it in, and they can.
Yeah.
So then, is there, are there any other, anybody else want to discuss that? Section one, moving along to article one, I should say, article one. We've done section one, section two, section three. And then section four on the boundaries. So, that would be, that would put us through articles.
So, now we'd be on article two of the council, section one.
Powers of council section.
Can we make that any larger, so that those of us who haven't? Thank you. Okay, question. Okay, question on, uh, section one, all powers, drop down to third line, enact appropriate legislation. We have ordinances, not legislation, correct? Or should we change that word to ordinance?
Well, it could be ordinance or, uh, legislation.
Appropriate legislation.
I, I mean, it's not, it's not all, it's not all.
Ordinances don't are legislation.
Okay.
That would be okay, yeah.
All right, section two. Section three. Section four.
Four refers to sixteen, you have seven.
Did, did somebody have a question?
Tammy, what's your?
Oh.
Section four, in the middle there, it refers to a section sixteen D. There is no section sixteen C.
Oh, is there a fifteen D?
There's a fifteen D, but there's no sixteen C.
Okay.
It looks like it, the problem is, was to say sixteen, uh, I think it was one, sixteen, three. Maybe somebody probably changed it from letters to numbers. I believe it was trying to refer to.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's what's taking them.
Can you, we can check that one.
May I ask what section three means?
Reserved?
Okay, so, Juan, sometimes you just leave spaces open, so if you have a charter amendment later, you don't have, you just have a section.
Okay.
And others have probably something that goes in there, and, yeah. I have questions on section four, do you want me to start on those? Are we on four?
Yeah, we're starting.
I have a question for staff. Where it says, "City for not less than two years of residency," is that, is that currently in code? Is that what it currently is, or are we changing it here? Must, uh, live in the city for two years. Is that what current qualification is? I don't know. I'm just wondering if we're proposing a change.
I think it is.
Okay. Okay, that, that, I just was curious about that. And then it says, "Two years preceding the filing," is it immediately preceding? Is it immediate? Oh, you have an answer?
According, so here's the Litchfield Park, Matt prepared this way back for us, but here's the residency requirement here.
Okay, does it say two years?
We'll have for.
Office of council member term.
It says not, residency is one year.
Oh, residency one year, it says right there.
Can we, so that would, if it's one year, then that would be a change.
Then that would be a change. Okay, so then my question is, who, who is proposing this change? It's currently one year, and whoever drafted this charter, either the other cities commonly use two years, or somebody on staff thinks that it should be two years. I'm just wondering what, what the proposed change is.
Go ahead.
So, many cities do, do that two years, our, our ones are two years.
Okay, so, so, all I'm, just bringing that to our attention, to say, so this is a change.
Right.
Do we like this change, or do we not like this change?
I like it.
I like it.
Okay, everybody good?
I like the change.
Okay, well, while we're doing it, it says, "Two years preceding the filing of election papers." Is it immediately proceeding? You had to live here in the last two years? Or you could have lived here two years ago, or twenty years ago, you could have lived here for two years. Do we want it to be immediately proceeding, or just proceeding, which it currently says?
That's a good idea. Immediately proceeding.
Immediately proceeding.
Because I would, I would qualify to run for council under one, because I've lived here for twenty years, twenty years ago.
Yeah, I would say immediately.
Immediately proceeding.
Yeah.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah. I don't think we need to take a vote on this, other than to say, "In the next draft, can we acknowledge the changes that this group said to make?" And it is immediately proceeding two years.
Years of residence.
Okay, so, that, that was my question on that, Paul. And then down at the bottom of that section, it talks about the age, and has mayor twenty-five years, and every, and the council members twenty-one years.
I think that's too young.
Well, my, twenty-one? Okay, I, well, let me finish my point, let me finish my point. If, if you elect a mayor who's twenty, if you elect a mayor who's twenty-five years old, and six council members who are twenty-one, does the vice mayor get to be the mayor when the mayor leaves? Because they haven't met the twenty-five, because later, or it's somewhere in here, it says, "Meeting all other conditions." They wouldn't have met that condition. So my question is, should it both be twenty-five, should it both be twenty-one? Or should you make an exception to say, "Anybody who gets promoted to the job of mayor, regardless of age, will, as long as they qualified as a council member?" I, I just think it's.
I think it's.
That's a really good question.
I think it's.
Mayor, what, do you have anything to add on that?
What's the?
I think the minimum is seventy-five.
Is that a legal, is that a?
Holy crap.
We haven't gotten the maximum age yet. Point of order here.
I think it's, I mean.
Let's go ahead.
It's pretty young.
Go ahead, Lisa.
I think in the document later, it addresses that, that scenario where someone does not meet the requirements.
Well, I think it, it vaguely does, and it says, "If the mayor can no longer serve, and somebody has promoted to that position," and it says something like, "Meeting all other conditions." And I'm reading this as, "They wouldn't have met that condition."
Right, but it says after that, I believe, I need to look, but I think it says if they don't meet, then I believe it calls out the procedures for signing.
Yes, so do they, or do they not meet? So, I, so, I, I want to hear everybody's opinion.
That's actually a very good point.
I, I, I want to hear everybody's opinion. I don't mind having twenty-one-year-olds if they want to serve, and the members of this community, a majority of them, say, "That person is qualified, I've gone to all the speeches, and I like that person." I don't have any problem with that. I just have a problem with the discrepancy in the age. I would just assume, say, twenty-one is the age, you can either be mayor or, or councilman. That's, anyway.
I did have that same question.
I think we need to clarify this.
But is there a remedy, in the event that they don't meet that particular qualification you suggested? I don't remember there being a remedy, but.
No, no, it just, it said something about, if they don't meet the qualifications, then I don't know what the next step is.
So, you're saying we either change it here to twenty-one, or we insert a remedy?
Yes, yes.
So, we?
Like, like the mayor and vice mayor have to be twenty-five. If, anybody that the council decides later to make vice mayor has to meet the qualifications of mayor. You could do that.
Why don't we, we can just kind of put that one in as one that we're going to look at?
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And then we'll move forward.
Okay.
It sounds like nonetheless, we will be raising the age, because the age currently for council members is eighteen.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is a change, where, all of these are changes. Okay.
It's, I keep it tracked.
So, a couple, so, when you don't have a charter, right, you call them general law, which means you have the power that's been given to you by state. There's two general types of state statutes. So, there's a situation where state statute has said, "This is the rule," and then that's the rule, if you're a general law city. There's a situation where state statute has said, "A city may, may create this kind of rule," it gives you some parameters, right? You can choose within that. And then there's a situation where the state law doesn't say anything about it. Right, so, most of these things will fall into one of those three categories. Right, in this situation, there is a state law that applies if you're a general law city. So, state statute says, "This is the rule, unless you make a charter and make a different rule to replace this rule."
And what is that?
The rule is that a person shall not be a member of the city or town council unless, at the time of the election, the person is eighteen years old, is a qualified elector residing within the city or town, and has resided in the city or town for at least one year preceding the election.
Okay.
Or, if it's been annexed less than one year, they lived in whatever that area was, for a year prior to the election.
Okay.
So, that's the, that's the current rule.
So, that's the starting point, and that's what we were following. So, what this, what this group needs to consider is, if you're going to raise the age of council members, or the mayor, or both, how do you respond to someone who says, "I'm old enough to vote, the state would have let me be on your election, but for some reason, this city thinks it's special, and you have to be seven years older to be the mayor, than the state would otherwise require." Why are you doing that? So, that's what we need to answer. Why would we do that? What are we doing? What is the purpose?
Do we know, are there any other cities, like, that have a higher age?
They all are.
They all.
So, there we go.
So, I mean, I think the answer is, it's written out real quick.
Yeah.
I mean, Peoria, twenty-one, historically.
I've done that one, I'm, as far as that age, you know, we can, we can move on with that.
We, we do have a remedy already in there, though. Um, it says, "Should the vice mayor not be qualified to assume the office of mayor, the council shall choose a mayor who is qualified among its membership."
And that would be based on?
If everybody's twenty-one, there is no one.
Theoretically, they're all twenty-one.
That's it.
Exactly.
Should no member of the council be chosen from council membership? A mayor shall be chosen to, or by the council, until such time as a special election can be held.
Yes.
Okay, so that's one we need further discussion.
We could do that, and look, and change the...
Urban.
...verbiage on that out.
Thanks for the legal clarification. That makes, that makes sense why we're following.
So can we move to section five?
Yeah.
Terms of the mayor. Currently, we don't have a term.
Yeah, we have four-year elections.
Four-year, four years.
We don't have term limits.
Term limits, no.
I think that's discussed later.
Later.
So I think that's, I think it's... In this section?
Where are the term limits?
There, John.
Term limitation, yeah, there it is. It's been deleted. So what, well, that was the question. It's been deleted. Was it deleted from another city's charter? Or was it deleted from what we currently do?
Just, do you...
Yes.
I prefer my favorite, return limits.
Hold on one second. Let the, let the city manager talk.
Yes, sir. It was about half and half. So I can honestly say, I have read all 19 charters in the states, and about half the cities have term limits and half do not. And, but, so, I had written that over before, and the term struck it, because they feel that, or they felt like it should be in the charter, and it's certain to a pre-ord, and it certainly is. This is your decision. Some of these things, they're just things staff, everything in this document is your decision. I can't stress that enough. But to me, on term limits, there's two sides to this issue. One, we're a small city, and it's hard to get people to serve.
I agree.
And you don't want to limit yourself to where you lose somebody that's really good. For example, the mayor goes to a great government. I've had a lot of mayors, he's the best mayor I've ever had. And I'm not saying this is...
I agree.
It's in the room?
I agree, I'm not here.
But I would also tell you, that my first city I ever worked for had had the same city council since 1968. The mayor was the mayor for over 50 years. In my opinion, it's like a... And that's just back to your opinion. Okay, but I don't know, but that's the balance there, right? You're a small city, it's hard to get people to serve here, right? If you're a bigger city, it's easier to get people. So, and as, in my opinion, we've never had a problem in this city with the people that vote deciding on term limits. And what I mean by that, they decide if you get reelected or not. So maybe that's enough, and just that statement, exactly.
If I can just address that, because you are right, there's a pro and a con to this. And I don't know which way I fall, to be honest with you. But, and I've only talked to one other member of this committee about it, so I didn't violate any open meeting law. But, there are two sides to this. One is, if you're a small city, it's really hard to get people. And if you have a qualified person, you want to hang on to them, you should hang on to them like grim death, like death, you know, hang on to that person.
Right.
Okay, the other side of that argument is, people who are in office have a significant advantage running for office over people who are not in office. And they take advantage of that in a lot of cities. A city where I used to work, they would, they would decide that the newsletter that goes out to the residents monthly, the people up for reelection get to write the articles right before the election. And you get to talk about all the things you've accomplished in the last four years. Okay, you get to converse with the public, where your opponent doesn't. So, if you had a really good candidate for council member, running against somebody who's established, that established person has a significant, significant advantage. So it's those two things, and we have to decide. And I don't think we decided today, but I think we need to at least know why we're picking term limits or no term limits. So...
Are there, are there hybrid, where they have 12 years, 16 years?
You can do anything you want.
At the same time, though, can't you also override a term limit, like...
No.
You voted out.
No, not, you have to have a charterman. If it's in the charter, you have to have a charterman.
Let's let the city manager talk again.
That question was, so if it's in the charter, the only way you can change it is through another election. So if you, if the group chose for a term limit in there, that would be there, unless you change it in the future charter amendment. That being said, one, if you decide for a term limit in there, you can decide how many of those are. For example, is it four fours, is it six fours? Who knows? Is it 24 years or 16 years? Maybe you could be on council for 16 years and be the mayor for another 16 years you chose to be, right? It, all opinions, the first question is, do you, in my opinion, do you want to have term limits at all? And if so, what are those? And I would tell you, I don't think this is the decision we made today.
Right, right, yeah.
But there are pros and cons, and I think we've thrown some of them out there. Anybody else, so that we're all, when we're all considering this at home, that you want to draw out there for consideration?
Lisa.
And one thing that, here's the example you gave further in the document. There's a thing about, or a statement about, city employees can't do anything to support a candidate.
Right.
So we could, I don't think that situation would happen here.
Nothing prevents a council member from contacting their constituents. What the city can't do is provide a council member, and not all of the council members, a vehicle for doing that. They can't say, we are going to allow you, and only you, to write in the newsletter. But if the council decides on their own, we're going to rotate this, and it just happens to come up where you're writing it right before the election. That's what they do. That's not city staff getting involved. You're right. City staff is different than council members. And there's nothing wrong with taking advantage of having a voice to your constituents. I'm just saying it provides an advantage.
Sure, sure.
Last piece of information on this topic. So it's just, the current law, right, a general law city can impose term limits and repeal term limits, but have to be done by the voters. The voters put up the term limits.
Okay.
So I think we'll move through that right now, and then, as far as like terms of council member, there's similar discussion, we can talk about that later. And then we're getting into section nine, duties of the mayor.
Wait, wait, what, what nine?
If we get through six, terms of council member, there was seven of observed.
On six, on D, where it says, council member shall serve four years staggered terms. I know what that means. That means three this four years, and three the next four years. Shouldn't that say staggered terms, three council members every four years? So it isn't two, 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 or...
Clarity.
Yeah, I mean, shouldn't it say, in staggered terms, shouldn't it be three council members in each, in every other?
So, those are four staggered terms.
If that's the way you guys are letting divide it, we can certainly do that.
Yes.
That would clarify further, to say, like you're saying, for example, four one election, three the next election, because we have a seven-member council.
Right, three council members, one election, three council members next election, and the mayors every four years with one of those groups. Right, yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Currently, the staggered terms is three council members, and three council members with the mayor.
Right, yeah, and I think it should say that. Staggered terms is kind of a general description of that.
You want to be more specific?
They just want more specificity in that statement.
I mean, it's what we're currently doing. Just, let's just describe it a little better, than just staggered terms.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. Is it possible for city employees to also be council members?
No, that's addressed here.
Okay. And then, I read something in another charter that I kind of liked. I think it was the City of Phoenix Charter. But it was the idea that any council member who had a felony conviction, their office would immediately become vacant.
That's...
It is?
It's already built down.
Okay. This is one of those things where it's here in one, and here in the other.
Yeah, I mean, it's covered in here. It doesn't say that. It says, the council shall decide whether they're removed. And it, and it states the conditions that the council can consider for removal. And I have a question.
I don't like, yeah.
When we get to that section, we should, we could, we could talk about it.
I don't think there should be an option to ban the council with felony convictions.
Anything else on some of the areas that were struck? Anybody have any questions on that? In section six, seven and eight were listed as reserved. And then the, section nine is duties of the mayor. Section 10 is duties of the vice mayor. About section 11, compensation for elected officials.
I have a question about the vice mayor, sorry.
Okay, sunny.
The vice mayor is appointed by the council members. Maybe I didn't see it, but is that done every year? That we do that, or is it...
Every two years.
Every two years, okay.
So section 11, Paul?
So on that, section 10, do we need to put that in there formally, that every two years will be? Is that what you're...
I would.
Okay.
For, for two-year term?
Actually, the way that section 10 is written now, this section 10 would allow the council to change the vice mayor even during the term. Because what it says is that this vice mayor serves at the pleasure of the council. The council could make a change during the two-year term.
Interesting term.
The one of the two-year term and pleasure of the council, two, one of the two.
All right, we'll look at that one, whether it's a pleasure or two-year.
So number 11, the compensation is, I just want to make sure I understand where we are. And staff can correct me. So currently, I think it is, the city council can establish compensation on their own. They can do that via ordinance. And this says, if, if the city council is compensated, the initial compensation will be established by ordinance. In other words, the city council approves it. And then adjustments to that would be by the, by the voters, right? That, that seems really awkward to me. I don't think that makes any sense to me. I, I don't mind the way it's currently written, where the city council, by ordinance, can establish mayor and council salaries. That's the way it's currently, and they should be able to adjust it by ordinance at some point in the future. I personally take great pride in being a city that doesn't pay its city council and mayor, because I can tell you, when you get in those cities that are paying them, I've seen council members reading their packet for the very first time at the dais, and they haven't looked at a thing, and they haven't done anything since the last council meeting, and they're always complaining that they don't get paid enough. And then it becomes, how much is enough pay? Well, as soon as you establish pay, you start looking at other cities. And you say, what, how come our mayor gets paid less than that city's mayor? Maybe we're not as important as... And it just becomes ridiculous. And then you have people in office who are doing it only for the money. They're doing it because I'm making $30,000 for showing up at a meeting and reading the agenda for the first time in front of the public. And it's ridiculous. I take pride in that. It is true public service. But, but I also understand that people say, it's some work, and they should be compensated.
It's a lot of work.
I've been a council member. I know how much work it is. It's not a lot of work. I mean, in my opinion.
All right.
Okay. No, no, I'm not going to argue. I'm not contradicting you. I'm saying, people will do it for the civic pride, and some won't, and can get paid. And I don't have a strong...
I got a, I got a question.
I don't have a strong opposition. I'm just saying...
What is the current, the policy is that there is no compensation for?
Correct.
Our council is currently receiving no pay whatsoever. One caveat I was using on this is, I spent a lot of time thinking on this paragraph. I really did. And, because there were several thoughts before, like, to me, it's hard for me not to put a starting amount here and say, if there was a salary in year X, that the starting salary would be Y. Because my concern there is, again, currently, we have a great council that receives no pay whatsoever, and they work hard. But if it's just via ordinance, the future council could say, my salary should be $10,000 a year, or 30.
So let me address that. I don't have an argument about having the council be able to establish a pay the way it is currently, by ordinance. And I think when we get to the ordinance section, we can, we can talk about this. But when we get to the ordinance section, an ordinance requires two public hearings, which should require a lot of notice, not 24 hours before the meeting. And when you have the first public hearing, you should say, this is when the next public hearing will be. So now the public has two bites at the apple to show up and see whether or not their mayor and council should do what they're doing. And if they want to do that in front of the public in two public meetings, I have no problem with it. I, I don't have any problem with it.
Your problem was that they do the ordinance, and then they have it go to an election.
And go to an election after that. That makes no sense to me.
But basically, we're changing, right now, we're volunteer, we don't offer anything. And we're, with this, we're going to then allow the ability to...
We already have it.
We already have that. They can do it by ordinance today. And I'm saying, I don't mind keeping that.
That's right, that's...
Correct.
Yeah.
Right? I don't mind keeping that.
Okay.
Let them do that, in front of the public in two public meetings.
You're just saying, we don't need to have a second party election.
I don't want to call an election to decide whether to raise their salary from 10,000 to 11,000. I don't want to do that.
I think, can I speak on this, or not?
Absolutely, you're willing to go to the fair.
Okay, well, I, I think that there's a problem with the council then deciding to give themselves the race, in that, there's, there just seems like there should be some arms length somewhere there. And the voter is the one we answer to. We work for the voter. We got hired by the voter. They are our boss.
If you wanted to do it vice versa, where the voters have to approve the first pay, and then by ordinance, you can alter it later, that would be better. But let me just say, you, you answer to the voters, and two public hearings, establishing an ordinance where everybody has a chance to come and vote and talk about it, is what has kept the pay from being implemented in the past. Nobody wants to go before the voters, say, I work so hard, I should get paid this amount. We had council members in Tempe who got paid a lot more than staff, who worked 40 hours a week really hard. And, and I'm just saying, going in front of the public and doing that, I'm okay with it, if you can justify it in front of the public. Which is how it is now, right, Mayor?
Correct. And another, another limiting factor in the way it works is, current council, if it wants to set a salary, that salary cannot go into effect until the next council is seated.
That's right.
So it's anywhere up to two years before, the pay, either, your pay, if you decide to add pay, or if you decide to change pay, can't, has, it can't go into effect until the next council is seated.
Thank you for addressing that, because I think you're right. And a lot of cities do that. It's not until the next election that goes into effect. We could be more dramatic. You could say, any seated council member who votes on this, that change won't go into effect during their term. It would only affect new council members. You could do that.
Well, and the other thing, if we decided to do it, that I'd like to see in there is it can't exceed the cost of living increase given to the staff.
Yeah.
There's no reason for council to get...
So this is another one of those things, I think, that requires further discussion.
I agree, yeah.
So let me give the opposite point. I'm not very good at this. But let me, I should have given the opposite point. The opposite point, which is made really clear to me, if you don't pay, you end up with people who don't need the money. And the young folks who could do it, but would like to be compensated for it, just went run for election. You know, and, and that's a good argument. That's a, that's a good argument. That you're, you're depriving people. And my counterargument to that is, if they don't want to do it for free and just do the public service, they don't have to. I just hate to see people do it just for the pay. And I, and we've never had that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, we've never had that.
Okay.
We have it in other cities, guaranteed, 100%.
I'd like to make a motion for a short intermission.
I think you can just do that as the chairman.
Well, it says you have to get a second on it.
I'll second.
It's pretty discretion, as we...
All right, we have, let's take a short intermission. We're going to stop right there at that one, and then we'll move forward from there and get back to that one later, when we come back. And I guess, there's pizza there that the city's provided, and drinks, and a little voice recording.
Chairman? How long is your intermission?
Uh, let's just do just less than five minutes.
Okay.
No, but I still shouldn't have said that. You said it's hard work, and I said, no, it isn't. I can just apologize. That was it. I shouldn't have said that, and I apologize. I just remember when I was a councilor. I was young. I was young, not making somebody very...
But I think that's because younger people maybe, maybe to run. Maybe that would be an incentive to get younger people to come in.
Right, and my point is, I don't want, I don't want a person who would only do it for the pay. That's all. I am really, I am really, because I got to tell you, I'm a big city. These people are in it for two things. To get higher office. They are not in it.
I don't think it is for Litchfield Park.
No. I don't believe that. Well, I take great pride in that.
When this comes up again, then why don't we talk about, like, I mean, I know Litchfield Park has a huge budget.
Hopefully, it's winding down, so I've had enough teaching English.
I'm not looking for an outlet, yeah, but they need to be compensated.
About math, American, this is called white devil. My argument to that, too, was, if you have reserves, maybe you just overtax people. And, and two... The only person who's paid here is the city manager.
Yeah, well, very much, it's the city manager, besides the...
All the city staff gets paid.
Yeah, for the city staff. But like, anybody, like, anybody who had a house, like, there would be the...
Yeah, the people who volunteer and are voted in by the public are not necessarily paid. I understand that, and I like it.
I understand.
I also think that people shouldn't lose money, and there are a lot of times where we don't reimburse people for the expenses they have on campus.
Yes, I agree.
We do have a little bit of that.
Yeah. Well, I'm not going to, I don't, like I said, how it is now, well, tell me this. How it is now, the mayor and council, for the last simple city incorporated, could have voted themselves a salary and never had. No, why, why is that, do you think? No, why is that, do you think?
I just think it should be one more point to write from, as a city councilor, as a... Ask that you should get paid. I think it should be another editing. We've never had a charter. I mean, you know, I mean...
No, I appreciate the argument. I mean, it's a good...
I need to go to law school.
Oh, God. Your board is wrapping your chair, just so you're aware.
Yeah, I'm moving the phone and going pulling out.
Oh, he's doing much better.
Good.
Why does the city put up all those big poles?
I saw him on his bike the other day.
Did you? He's not safe on a bicycle.
I haven't seen him on the bike for a long time.
No, he has cataract surgery last week. And, yeah, so he's better. He's now on a coma, and, yeah.
Okay, all right. Now, I haven't seen him on the bike either.
We have to see him coming tomorrow.
Absolutely.
That's your dinner? Oh, too far, maybe. Oh, I thought it was... No, no. I feel... I feel took me to sleep.
Are you ready on Dan? Was it standing to get going? They were just there. He sent pictures. Oh, my God.
Oh, my gosh.
Every day.
Are you there, Terry?
We're all here. We're going to continue on. We're currently on Section 11 of Article 2. We had some brief discussions about compensation for elected officials, which we've decided to go ahead and we'll move through that, and that'll come back up in discussion. And then the next one would be Section 12, council to be judge of qualifications of its members. And there were several areas in there that had, or a few lines that had been struck from before. If anybody has any comments about that, Section 12.
Section 12 on C, Mr. Chairman, it says, "It requires three council members to submit charges of unlawful conduct against the mayor or council members." And my question, I guess, oh, here comes our turn. Wait till you catch that. So we're on the part about council members and mayors judging themselves their qualifications. And in Section C, it says, "It requires three council members to submit charges of unlawful conduct against the mayor or council members, as defined in Section B." But Section B talks about something, it talks about things that aren't just unlawful. Malfeasance, misfeasance, nonfeasance. I mean, is that all considered unlawful? And is it only unlawful conduct?
So I think the intention of that language is that it is only unlawful conduct, and then it's a subset of unlawful conduct. Unlawful conduct that involves that following list.
The preceding list in B. So all those things in B are considered unlawful?
Not the preceding, the following.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unlawful conduct involving moral perpetuity, fraud, malfeasance, misfeasance.
Oh, that's not in there.
Malfeasance.
In C?
In B.
Oh, in the preceding. I'm in Section C.
Oh, you're in Section C.
If it requires three council members to submit.
To submit charges of unlawful conduct. Is that, are those all considered in B, unlawful conduct?
Well, if you look at the section, yeah, so I guess it is preceding. So it's referring back to B, and B says, "There's a subset of unlawful conduct," which is, because there might be unlawful conduct that does involve moral perpetuity, or fraud, or malfeasance.
Okay.
So including but not limited to.
Okay, so I'm fine with that. Thank you. So all unlawful conduct includes all of that?
You want that to be including but not limited to?
Right now, it's only, it is.
So if there, and it's only those things that could be considered for disqualification?
That's what it currently...
Okay.
So I would say something like, oh, so maybe not following.
Right. Okay, so these things say, these things qualify you, qualify the council to determine whether or not you're still qualified, based on these things. This is the question you had earlier.
Yeah.
So all of these things are what they can consider?
That's right.
Only, it's limited to those things. That's what they can consider.
Limited to those things.
And three council members have to submit charges, I don't know what that means, charges of those things occurring, in order to even consider it. That's what this says.
That's what it says.
Okay.
And the way that it's expanded, so it's limited in that, it's not any criminal conduct, that's any criminal conduct that falls into one of those categories. The way it's expanded is, the council is who determines whether it falls into one of those categories.
Right.
Right? So moral perpetuity, famously, eyes of the beholder, right?
Right, and then there's something later, or I can't remember, maybe earlier, that says something related to this, and I kind of lost my train of thought there, but I think what your answer answered my question.
Or context, general law cities are generally without power to elect their own members.
Wow.
You can't kick each other off the council, right? Generally left to work. Now, public officials can be removed under state law by, in general, right, for certain time. Generally speaking, general law cities do not have the power to kick each other off the council. So this is an area where you're adding new powers by a charter, by stuff in the charter that you leave.
So I just read in my train of thought. It also says somewhere in here, which is good, that any council member who's charged by three other council members with this, gets to decide if they want to have a public hearing. So the council members can go in executive session to talk about all this want. If the council member says, "I want these charges discussed publicly," I think you're railroading me. I want them discussed publicly. It says in here that the council member gets the opportunity to have that discussion publicly.
And that here is existing state law for city employees.
Yeah.
So right now, the city council has the ability to go into executive session to discuss any particular employee.
Okay.
Right? That doesn't apply to council members. But that employee who's being discussed has to be notified and has the right to demand that he's done in public instead of executive session.
Thank you.
So this is basically transforming that rule.
And then does it have to say, "Submit charges in writing," or does it doesn't matter? I mean, it just...
So again, the context is that you're creating a rule that doesn't exist in state law, so it's really up to you what, if you want it to be in writing, or if you want it to be in a public, you know, hearing, or what you want to do. That's something that you can have.
You're talking about the part that says file with the city clerk?
Submit charges of unlawful conduct, in writing, or...
Well, it says, "The charges shall be filed with the city clerk," so that presumes it's in writing.
That's fine.
I think that's fair.
I think, though, that it should be including but not limited to.
Right. So let's talk about that. What do we want council members to be able to, look for other council members to get out of office, right? If it's just, "I don't like the way you're voting on things," we don't want that.
But it's unlawful conduct, including but not limited to. So there's that word.
So you're adding...
So anything that's unlawful, would unlawful be defined in the back? If it said, "Not limited to"?
You could do that. I don't think you would need to. I think, if your goal is to make it broad, then you go ahead and not define it, any unlawful conduct, right?
Is there unlawful conduct that doesn't fall?
Speeding it up?
That's what I'm saying, jaywalking?
Under the current, I believe the intent of the current speed, right, is to eliminate speeding, eliminate jaywalking, probably eliminate, you know, bar fight, right? And take more to ideas like that, fraud, you know, pojory.
I mean, this is, we have to be careful with this. You can't have three council members who just don't like another council member, the way they're voting and the way their opinion goes, to say, "We want you," and you have a speeding ticket, and you're out. You know?
I would caution you on this, to be very careful with this provision. It makes a lot of sense, and I understand, you know, if somebody's a bad person, they do something really bad, they want to be able to come off council. We have been very fortunate, Ian Litchfield, to have councils that work together really well, really, really well. Couple of exceptions over the years, where it got sideways a bit. And when it gets sideways, it can get really emotional by council members. So you've got to be very careful. You don't want to end up injecting something like this into the middle of it, something that will eventually blow over and you can fix. So...
So what do you think, Suzanne, you were asking?
I, and maybe this is like a more general thought, is that we obviously hold our council members and mayor to a very high standard. And the last thing we want is, as a city, is to be seen...
On the news.
Not that it's happening, or anything like that, I just want to clarify this. But from the public eye, you know, we want to avoid any perception of allowing bad behavior to continue or to be perpetrated in our city. So that's kind of the lens that I'm looking at this through. And that's why I focus on the unlawful, and you guys saw in my background, like, this is my wheelhouse here, so that's why I'm kind of focusing on that.
We can put that on, we'll make note of that, that we need, whether we need to add that, include it, or not limited to.
Call in, Walker, the qualification of mayor, vice mayor, discussion, right? One thing to remember, that a bunch of speeding tickets doesn't disqualify you from voting for the office and being elected by the voters. And so, you know, you could create that kind of imbalance, where the voters can choose to elect somebody who has a bunch of speeding tickets, and this is if you broaden it, right? You do including but not limited to. And then the council, the person the voters picked off, right? Because he continues to get speeding tickets.
I would like to add this whole document before we leave.
Let's go, yeah, let's hold on that one right there, and we'll just go move ahead to Section 13, induction of mayor and council into office. I didn't really see. And then in Section 14, absence to terminate a membership.
I had a question about this. I read this in Goodyear's Charter as well. I'm mayor, chairman. Susan Fix speaking. Is this a common occurrence in your council meetings, for people not to show?
With virtual and all...
Yeah, I agree, because...
Yeah, I'm okay with that. It looks like there was some things struck on that, too.
Yeah, consecutive absence.
Well, when you throw in that without consent of council, the person who can't make it because they had a death in the family, the council is...
How about, um...
You're excused. It doesn't count.
Let's go Section 15, vacancies in the office of mayor. Again, there were some areas that were cut.
Yeah.
15A.
15A.
Quote, "Why do we choose?" Is not...
Yeah, there are a lot of...
Chosen from council membership. Anything else on that? Into B? That's pretty... C? D or similar?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Can I make comments on 15B?
Yes.
One thing you might say, there's, you see, this is if there's an absentee and also mayor. One thing I might suggest on this, is that further research on this. And of course, you're not yourself, you're not the same as me, I'm sorry. But maybe you require two letters, versus just one psychiatrist, one psychologist. For example, what if you have a psychologist that just hates the mayor and says, "I don't like him," and you ask, "Is it probably a good idea to have more than one letter for that reason?"
I think, yeah, you would have to have two different opinions, two medical opinions there.
15B, sir.
Might want to move into the doctor, who's actually...
And then be limited, right?
Or his opinion.
Correct. Specialty area for the basis.
And an exam, or some observation, and...
Yeah, I haven't, I see my notes here, but I thought that I'd really like to see that called out what that looks like. I mean, I get mad at Tom, the mayor, excuse me.
I can't believe you get mad at me.
You're a hard man to deal with.
So you want a doctor note?
Yeah. Can I just go and hit the doctor and say, "Go pick my eyelids out?"
Yeah, I think that one needs to get cleaned up a little bit. And they'll have to have at least two medical, and they'll have to be specialty...
Special, yeah.
Well, and I hope to think that maybe there should be something like what we were talking about previously, where three council members need to say, "There's something the matter here, we need to get him checked out," you know? Because it's just one person being able to suggest it, just seems like it's ripe for...
That one has room.
If it's one person, that would be...
Yeah, no, we can't have that. We'll have to, and that will have some room we can adjust.
Right.
That's covered.
What, so is, what is B being adjusted to? So unclear.
I think it was B.
Medically and mentally incapable.
Would require two medical opinion, and then would have to be based on specialty area.
We need three. Two is never a good number.
So by state statute, four, two letters? Why don't we just leave it as the state statute? Why do we need the two letters?
Specialty letters.
What, but like...
Well, because this is just one.
Why, what does the statute say? Sorry. Is this something we need to come back to? Because I don't want to take, I don't really override the state. Yeah, this is state statute, and then...
So we can come back to that.
Thank you.
This is like...
We can come back to that one and clarify that.
But state statute would require a competency hearing? Well, it doesn't. I believe that is what it's required. It doesn't say which state statute it's required, but I believe that's what...
I haven't seen this till just now, but I think Section A says, "The vice mayor will serve as mayor if the mayor becomes unable to serve," right? It just says, "The vice mayor will serve." And then it says, "If the vice mayor is otherwise not able to, not qualified, then they would choose from amongst council members." Is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and so nothing in there talks about electing the vice mayor to serve as mayor, it just says, "He shall." But then you go down to Section B, and it says, "If the vice mayor is elected by council to serve as mayor." I don't think that is called for in Section A. Either the vice mayor serves, or if the vice mayor is incapable of serving, then they choose from amongst the rest of the council members. So Section B really makes no sense, if it says, "If the vice mayor is elected by council," because it doesn't provide for the vice mayor being elected by council.
So if it said, "When," if and when the vice mayor...
You're talking about that would need some clarification.
The vice mayor shall, but if that vice mayor shan't, then council elects the vice mayor.
No, then the council elects... Oh, you're saying they elect a new vice mayor?
That's the way I'm reading it.
I don't think that's the way A reads.
And then B takes care of it.
They choose amongst council members to serve as the mayor.
Yeah.
So then B would say, "If the vice mayor does assume office of mayor, then they need to choose, not as elected to serve."
Right.
Because there's no way the vice mayor is elected to serve. Vice mayor is the vice mayor, and will, shall serve.
So it's the elected part.
Yes, if the vice mayor assumes the responsibility of mayor.
So elected to the vice mayor.
We'll let legal counsel look at that, and I think that's...
That just meant clarification.
Yes. It's a word, elected.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
So back then, when we went to C and D, anything else on that, Section 15? Vacancies over the office of council member, or similar?
Where are you?
Section 16, vacancy in the office of council member. That has also the, still some verbiage about the medical doctor, and that one may need clarification, like, two and subspecialty area. Same language as with the mayor. We can go back to that one, and then 17 is reserved, and then the next one, Section 18, special meeting?
I just have the same little nitpicky stuff there. It says, "The mayor or vice mayor acting as mayor." It should just say, "The mayor or acting mayor." Because the acting mayor could be the vice mayor serving as mayor, or a council member, or it just should just say, "The mayor or acting mayor."
Okay.
Okay, perfect, okay.
That's fine. Moving into Section 19. Any issues anywhere at 19, 20, 21?
Right.
Lisa, 18? Lisa, eighteen.
Oh, that, that needs the word may added, may call. Okay.
Yeah, that's the same thing Kenny had discussed in the. And going in through twenty-one, twenty-two. Section twenty-three, interference of administrative service. Any concerns anywhere there, Mike, anybody? So we've pretty much have gone to article two. Anything else on article two, anybody want to go back to or?
We're making pretty good progress.
And all this, we're going to have, we'll have the opportunity to go back and we're going to do a vote as well. So we're just going to edit.
Someone's cell phone is interfering with the recording.
Oh.
Oh, no.
What is?
You're not on anymore.
What's it doing? Carrie, what are you getting?
A lot of static and thumping.
Well, that's just us talking.
Maybe that was.
All that static.
Is that better? Is it better?
That's better, it stopped.
Okay.
Sounds better on my end.
Okay.
I wasn't on it, I promise.
Sorry. All right, so then we can start looking, if you want, we can look at article three.
Yes, yes, yes.
Acquaintment of city manager. Does he need to leave the room?
No.
Yeah, Mike.
The indefinite term part is that, is that, Dan, where did that come from?
My contract is that way. Some cities have terms in their contracts, some do not. I will tell you, granted, my opinion is biased on this, but some cities that do terms for city manager contracts, there's a reason for that. Because when you give a city manager, either they need voluntary leave or you're firing them. And if you're firing them because you don't like them, a, a city's way of getting around a severance package is just let your contract expire. Hey, your contract expired last Tuesday, so we don't know you at February. I think that's a bad way to treat a city manager, my opinion. The only thing I love about my contract here is that they have a term on it and that's why we're this way. Again, that's totally biased, so it's that front.
Is that something that needs to be in the charter or is that something the council can decide?
I think that's a council issue, don't you think?
Well, um, in a general law city, some of the, uh, there are some rules established by state. And one of them says that the mayor, or sorry, that the manager is appointed or removed by a simple majority vote of the council. And so that's something that you have to put in your charter if you want it to be different to the people.
Do you think that should be a council issue? I don't know. I do.
Did the council make all the decision on the term limit?
Yeah, no, on the city manager, I mean. That is the power vested with the city council. Yeah, I agree. We should just modify that, yeah, just make it more clear. So I think that should be a city council issue.
I'm okay with that.
I mean, well, I mean, we're not, we're just.
Yeah.
So what are we talking about? I don't, I don't think so. What are you proposing? I'm just, I'm just proposing.
So you're talking in section one.
As, like, um.
Indefinite term?
In indefinite terms. Yeah, I just think the way it's written, I under, I understand the way it's written, but I think if, let's just say the city manager, you know, have problems or they're going to technically get fired, the, the city council would know more about the issues than, than the general public or anybody. So I think they would have, they would have the, they would have the actual, the right to terminate the.
Well, section two kind of handles that, because it says the city manager shall serve at the pleasure of city council.
Council, right.
Which means that if tomorrow Matthew shows up and we've all changed our opinion of him, we could all say, we're done.
Yeah.
It can be that quick.
Okay.
And you don't have to show cause, right?
So you're, you're suggesting we remove the indefinite term part and just say, up to the city council? I, I agree, because as hard as you say it is to get council members in a small city.
I agree.
It's a lot harder to get a city manager in a small city.
It is, a good one too.
They have all the same hard issues that every city has and they have a fraction of the money to pay the people to do it. So, I, I mean, I think, I think I agree with you that the indefinite term, there's no reason to have that in there. If, if the city manager says, I'm only going to work here if it's an indefinite term, then they would come to some agreement. And if the city council said, we have to have a term, then they would come to some agreement or not.
Right.
Matthew, what do you think on that one?
It, it could certainly be handled that way. That certainly could be up to council discretion that, and contract is negotiation, of course, between manager and council.
Yeah.
I don't, and certainly, it can certainly be either way.
We'll look, we'll just kind of highlight that.
Yeah, I think indefinite term is unnecessary.
And two talks about that as well.
Okay.
So they're moving in, anything else on one or two?
I, I just want to weigh one more comment on that. If we have a city manager and we've given him a contract term that's two years, at two, at a year and a half, he's going to start looking for a job. I mean, if you're, if you're, am I, am I making a false assumption or?
You, you would have the discussion, is the city generating my contract? Should I start looking elsewhere?
Yeah.
But it is the city manager's responsibility, hopefully to put it on the agenda or not, if it's going to be discussed. And generally know where you're heading at that point, hopefully.
Yeah.
But some cities have term limits, some don't. I guess that, I would agree.
I don't see why we need to.
Change it?
To change it. No, I don't either, I don't either, because it says the council will, you know, basically.
Well, the only thing is the indefinite term and we can come back to that, yeah.
Removing indefinite term gives the council the right to make it an indefinite term.
So that's the only thing, we'll just look at, we can look at that.
It's making it more flexible.
No, no, this says it shall be for an indefinite term. So if the council said, I want to give you a two-year contract, you'd say, no, the charter said it has to be for an indefinite term.
But that was my point, if you remove indefinite term.
Yeah, that's all we're.
You're broadening your capabilities on a council member, right?
Right, yes. Okay, so long as we're not putting in there for a prescribed term.
No.
Okay. And then section two, we talked a little bit about that. Section three, powers and duties. We're in section three now, city manager, power of duties, one, two, three, and four.
I, I have a question down at number seven if we're down that far.
So on, one quick question on the three, that was struck, those are things that were struck there. The city manager shall have the sole authority to control order and all that, that's.
That's inserted.
That's inserted.
Oh, that was inserted then.
Why was that inserted?
That was inserted by legal, just for clarification.
Oh, your job description? Right? I mean, yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah, no, I understand. I mean.
Well, this, this prevents council members from reaching down into staff.
And, yes, and that's in there in another section as well, where health, safety, and administration.
Yeah.
It's, it's to be repeated as often as possible.
Yes, sir.
So in paragraph seven where it says, but, I mean, in the middle of paragraph seven, but he shall file promptly with the council, a certificate showing such emergency. So filing, so this is, oh, so this is declaring a disaster, I think, right?
Oh, this is, I mean, eight. Okay, an accident, disaster, other.
Okay, here it is. So we're, we're approving payment for things out of order. Normally you would get council approval and this says if the city manager has an emergency and has to purchase something in that emergency, let's just call it a generator to keep things running, it says shall promptly with the council, I, I inserted there, at a public meeting to approve by city council retroactively. That's really common. You want the city, you want, you don't just want to file it with the council like, hey, I made this emergency purchase of a million dollars. You know, you want council to approve that retroactively to comply with state law, which requires them to approve purchases, even if it's retroactively.
Anything, anything over my space, anything over my spending, yes, sir.
Well, I'm just saying, that's not written here. It just says shall file promptly with the city council, a certificate showing such emergency and necessity for that action. And I'm saying put it on an agenda, have them approve that expenditure retroactively to stay in compliance with state statutes of the council.
That could be added.
That's all.
And that makes it, again, as long as it's over my spending, yes.
Yeah, to approve.
Whatever normally has to be approved by the city council.
So for example, just to remind yourself of what I'm saying here, so the city manager has discretion to spend up to forty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars without council approval. Anything fifty grand or over requires council approval. But anything above fifty thousand dollars, like, for example, if Billis Parkway fell in next week, obviously, I'm not going to wait until councilman to get it fixed. I'll get it fixed. But that's exactly what he's saying, if we need to be on the following council agenda for ratification, then he's right.
Yeah.
So we just have that built in there.
Right, so put it on the agenda, have them approve it, that's all. And it should say that, that they have to do that.
Yes.
Matt, or can I ask why we struck, um, section five about the magistrate? Because don't these currently oversee courts?
That's a complicated question, because you have to have separation of powers, because there's been a lot of, a lot of legal grounds with the cities about that. For example, it's in the current city code now that the city ju, that the city judge is evaluated by the city manager.
Right.
But yet the city court, the court administrator does not work for me. The court administrator works for the judge. And that's because of, the court's a little different and that's the reason why. I, I'm going to, I'm going to be honest, in a perfect world, in my opinion, the judge would serve at the pleasure of the manager, but I thought legal couldn't do that. Just to be honest.
So whose pleasure does he serve at? Ours?
He doesn't serve a pleasure at all.
Anybody.
But you can only fire him for, camera hard, you can only fire him for calls.
How do they get appointed?
They're informed by council.
You took.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Are you talking about the judge?
Yeah, the judge.
You appoint the judge.
Right.
Well, I had to tell you, they also report to the state supreme, the state judiciary. So that's always been an argument that a, a judge will say, I'm going to give all my staff raises even though you're not. And the city manager will say, no, no, the budget falls under my jurisdiction. And that person would say, no, no, I'm appointed by council and I report to the state supreme court. You do not get to, but it's always been agreed upon that the, the city attorney, the city judge, just go along with what the city manager says for all the other employees, just to keep things flowing. But they report to the state more than they report to you.
The council provides the budget.
Right.
So that control too.
So is that.
Yeah, it's very complicated.
We just need to make sure that's built in.
Do we need to clean any of that up anywhere in here too?
So that's a good, that's a good synopsis of a very complicated issue. The supreme court says that the city manager in particular is not supposed to interfere with the administrative function within the court, right? But the court is subject to the general budget requirements of the council. But supreme court says that the council is required to provide an adequate budget, whatever that might be, right? Within what the council is capable. So complicated, it's kind of a separation of powers thing. The rules are not totally clear, but one thing that is clear is that the, our supreme court says that the manager at least is not supposed to be involved in the day-to-day operations of the court or the direct management of the court employees. He's supposed to leave that.
So that's just an area we need to clarify and clean up a little bit then. Anything else on?
Wait a second, it's struck now. It's currently struck for all the reasons I just said.
So when you say.
We don't need to clean it up.
You put it in, but I think a lot of it.
We don't need it.
Again, if we clean it up, do we reintroduce it or just leave it out?
I think we leave it out.
Leave it out.
Leave it out.
Okay.
I'll leave it up. Leave it up, it has to be done.
Anything else on, um, city managers, article three? Suzanne?
I had a question, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to read my note here. Oh, um, number seven says in case an accident, disaster, or other circumstances creating a public emergency. Matthew, I just wondered, is there anywhere in this document where the city manager or the mayor has given specific responsibilities, requests, um, specific types of help? Um, let's think what if, um, like, for example, if something horrible happened and we needed to call in national guard to help with a major disaster? Do you do that? Does the mayor do that?
That was only the mayor and the powers of emergency powers, it's totally in the office of mayor.
So it's.
For example, we did that during COVID for quite some time, that the mayor could sign contracts without council meeting, because he had to, because of the situation. That's, that's totally in the powers of the mayor and that would stay the same under this now. Unless, of course, you got one sketch there.
Be any reason to. As long as it's addressed, I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't read that.
Matthew, can you clarify? My memory doesn't, didn't give me the answer. Is it, is that in this text or we're saying that it's not in this text and therefore state law would continue to say that?
Yeah.
It is, it is not in this text.
All right, so let's go, we'll move on from article three, we'll move into article four. Administration, departments, officers, employees.
I think we skipped section four, city manager to attend council meetings.
You want us to remove that?
It's on bottom of page ten.
Makes your life a lot easier.
Bottom of page ten, so.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Section six, yeah.
Section four, five, and six, and then we get to article four.
Are we on five yet?
No.
No.
On four?
Article four.
Oh, section four.
Section four.
Section four, city manager attending.
Yes.
Were you talking about section four of article three?
I have a question, sorry. And I'm going to rely on Sunny to assist me on this question. This is Susan Fix, by the way. On, um, D, resignation of manager, um, I know.
We're on section six.
Section six.
Article three.
Article six, section D.
You're running out of words.
No, article three, section six.
She's getting paragraph D.
Sorry, section six, paragraph D.
So we're, we're.
We're in article three, yeah.
Section four, does anyone have any comments on article three, section four?
No.
Section five.
I have one comment. And this is only because I've seen it blow up in a city manager's face before, where it says if the manager is temporarily absent, he shall appoint somebody and, and should say, and immediately notify the city council of that appointment. Just saying to somebody, hey, I'm going to be on vacation for the next couple of days, you're the acting city manager. If you don't notify the city council immediately, it's bad. It, it should just say that.
We can add that in there. Section five.
Well, sure. As soon as, as soon as they don't, then it seems the charter doesn't require me to do that.
So that's on section five, acting city manager.
That's section five.
Yeah, section six, removal of city manager.
I, well, we're not quite there yet, but keep going. I was on paragraph D.
Of that same section?
Yes.
So we're on six?
Yes.
Section six, removal of city manager.
Right, I've, I've never seen, I've never seen paragraph B before in, in any charter. And it says that if you're within a hundred and eighty days of people being elected, you can't remove the city manager. So that would be every two years when you have an election, within a hundred and eighty days of that election, you can't remove the city manager. So the opportunity for removing the city manager shrinks.
Well, you, you could have moved them if they're coming to failure or something like that. That's, that's very common in a, that's very common in a city manager contract. The reason you do that is so that you can't, so you don't let the new council make you leave fire you the next day.
Right.
So that way you have six months to know that they don't want you anymore, is the idea for that. That's dearly in city manager contract.
Right.
That's where it comes from.
It comes, again, I, I can see that that be in contracts. Have you seen it in a charter before?
Yes.
This is in other charters?
I'd have to look back, it's been a while.
We can, we can read other field charters, we'll.
No, I know.
I believe it.
All right, so I, I, if, that was my question. If this is brand new and not in anybody else's charter, then I would say we need to talk about this.
Put that in there and then we can come back to that, Kenny?
Yeah, okay.
I, I think that's a good point, though. We've handled other stuff at the, you know.
This is just the first rung.
Very similar version of it in Goodyear's charter of Goodyear says, notwithstanding provisions of this section, the city manager shall not be removed from office other than from misconduct in office during or within a period of ninety days, next succeeding the induction of any member of the council.
So we could look at that too, the number of days.
So this says half a year from any election, which occurs every two years.
Yeah, we can just cut that day down. Section C. And then section D, resignation of manager.
So section C is not in the Goodyear's charter? Is, is this something that's been added into our charter?
C?
Yes, so section C, six C is not in the city of Goodyear's charter. So my question was, was this added to our charter only?
This came from other charters. Things like that, that you don't see in one charter, came from another. Makes sense.
It does.
I don't think he just used Goodyear's charter, I think he incorporated and read a lot of.
Is there something in that that's concerning?
I'm just curious as to why this is. We've gone through a lot of city managers current.
We've gone through a lot of city managers currently, if you, I mean, I mean, I think maybe that's why, you know, with after Daryl and stuff, Daryl's here in my time, and then we had the other city manager, you know, that, Bisbee, right? Or, I think so. And he didn't stay very long. I mean, I don't have a problem with 60 days' notice.
60 days.
Was there on C?
Wait, we're on C, this is the one that says.
It's not public hearing.
If the city, if it's determined that the city council is going to dispense with the city manager, then the city manager can request a hearing 30 days following the notice of removal. However, the city council, you know, doesn't have to change their mind. And so we're going to grant somebody who the council has determined shouldn't be the city manager anymore, a public hearing, knowing that you can't convince anybody other than the people who have already, that seems odd.
So, if I could clarify that a little bit. So, that came from another city, I'm going to be honest, I don't know which one. But I still look at it and see. But the reason, so the manager can request a hearing afterwards to say, you know, what happened, why did you fire me? But I'm going to be honest, I don't think that's the most important sentence in that paragraph. I think most important sentence in that paragraph is not subject to any review by any court or agency. And what I mean by that, there's a, there's a valley city, I'm trying to say this correctly. There's a valley city that fired a city manager a while back, and that city manager is now suing the city for wrongful termination and its expenses. That's the reason why I put that sentence in there. That way it's not subject to court, so you don't put the city in that case. I would tell you, for me personally, I would never sue the city for firing that stupid political suicide. Nobody else will ever fire, will ever hire you for again. But it happens. So that's why I put that in there. Please don't think I'm taking this as what you're saying.
Well, I don't even know.
I said that's a very important sentence.
Is it even legal? So, if you write something that says the action of the council is not subject to any court, that's not true. You can't write that.
Court will decide.
Right. Right, I would take that sentence out. Why would we say that? That's just not true.
It's input of the city.
Okay.
All right, well, let's underline that as an area we've got to look at. And then as far as the resignation of 60 days.
Yeah, that's fine.
I like that.
That's fine, for sure, yeah.
All right, Suzanne, anything else in Article 3?
I was, I was going to ask, this is Susan Fix, on Section D, really quick. I was going to converse with Sunny. I know, it took a long time to find me last year.
It did.
I know a lot of applicants came through, you know, to try for this position. And I'm wondering, does it make any sense to maybe, right, change this up a little bit to make it easier to get the new city manager adjusted to the position? So what I'm saying is possibly, should the old city manager agree to train the new city manager for a set period of time? Or is that pointless?
Matthew, what do you?
Sometimes the new city manager, I mean, the old city manager doesn't have any opportunity to do that. In our cases, every single one has had either an assistant city manager that the council allowed to assist the new city manager in helping him get on his feet. No one's ever, none of our city managers have just come in and gone cold turkey on, I don't know anything, I'm going to do all this. So I'm not sure what you're asking.
I was just wondering if we maybe ask that a minimum of 90 days' written notice would be.
Instead of 60?
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I wanted to even ask you.
Matthew, you better stay a long time.
Yeah, Matthew, what was your question? Or, go ahead, Bl.
I was going to ask, even regarding 60 days, is that a industry norm? Is that a positional norm?
60 days is pretty standard, I've always had 60 days in other cities. I have no problem with 90, 90 makes sense too. But I would tell you, to Susan's question, what you're talking about is a transition contract. That you'd be able to advise, I think that's a great idea. If the person was willing to do it, all the points are like they're leaving. If they're really going inherently to go to a city, that might be, but if you're firing them, they're not going to want to do that. So I think that, I think that would be great if they want to do it. But you just have to think how to order it. But it is a great idea.
I would say from a legal perspective, what you're doing here is establishing an expectation, I suppose, right? Because it says right there, if requested by council, right? So maybe you're putting your thumb on the scale a little bit in the negotiation with the outgoing manager, you know, convincing him to do it. But you're not making fun of him.
So we can look at that day 90 and then whether we add that component in. Anything else?
Before we get off that, I think we have to be careful. If 90 is not a positional norm, you're going to be putting that city manager at a massive disadvantage with his next employment. So we have to be very thoughtful about that.
Okay. Any other thoughts on Article 3? Keep moving on, we'll go to Article 4. Administrative departments. City clerk, Terry is here listening.
So city finance director, was that input or is that?
So city clerk were good with that section?
Yes.
And then this whole Section 2, city finance, that's a new section that was just put in?
That's correct, sir.
Was that a legal thing or that's a new position or?
That was put in my legal circle. And just a clarification, Paige is our assistant city manager, she's also a finance director.
So are you comfortable that that will always be the title? Because you'll have to have a charter amendment to change that. So if you wanted to change her to chief financial officer, you can't do it because it says she will be a finance director.
Well, I would say, I think probably what you're thinking of is, so every city is required to designate a chief financial officer by state statute. A lot of the cities have finance directors as their title when they're also designated.
Absolutely, they have.
But to officially change the title and give them just one title, you would have to.
If you're going to put the title of the person in here, and the city manager is never going to change, that title is never going to change. This title changes all the time in lots of cities. So just think about it for the next meeting. And the only other thing I'd say about that section is, it says, shall receive and have custody of all the money in the city. And I think that should say oversee the receipt and custody of. I don't think we want to put the responsibility of, oversee the receipt and custody.
I think that's fair.
Right.
She doesn't have a bank account in her name with all the city's money.
And Kenny, as far as that, you were saying the other title would be then the CFO?
You know, most charters say the city manager has the authority to designate the departments, their titles, and the people who run those departments. And then you can change them from time to time. Once you've put the department head's name in the charter, that will be the department head's name. It will be the finance director. And if that's, if you're comfortable with that, that's fine. It's just want to make sure we don't make a mistake and tie your hands later.
Your suggestion would be, for example, the first sentence would just say, the city manager shall appoint an officer of the city who shall be responsible to the city manager who shall, you know, oversee all the money. Right, you just skip the part where you say.
Unless you're absolutely certain that that will always be a title in the city, then just leave it in.
Yeah, just be more vague about it.
You can, you can be.
What's the bad point about it?
Well, you have to have, you have to ask the voters if you want to change your title.
And here's the thing, too. If every other finance director of every other city is the chief financial officer, and she's the finance director, there's a perception of imbalance or how.
Could you just add parentheses, CFO at the end?
Certainly, because that's what you like to do.
Well, and just that way you fit both of them.
The problem is, I've changed it over the years. It might be a CFO, might be appropriate for the next decade, and they always change. That's the problem, is finding enough flexibility in this to make it work. I'm going to put Paige on the spot. Paige, what do you think? It's your job.
I am technically the CFO.
So you're the finance officer by title, and then you're the designated chief financial officer of the city because you have to designate somebody to do that with the state. And that works, as long as your title will always remain finance director.
Which actually, my title is assistant city manager slash finance.
Okay, so do you just come back to us, tell us what you want to do? I don't really care, whatever you want to do, I just want to tie your.
Yeah, the title.
I think it's very possible to write the section with.
Yeah.
More generically.
Okay. So then, anything else on that?
I have a question.
Sunny?
Yeah, I, don't we already have a designation where we have a finance director? I mean, we've always had a finance.
In ordinance, in code.
I think the difference of this with an appointment, where right now I'm an employee, like I have the same process with all the other employees, and then with.
No, no, I think this bill, I don't think this changes that. I think it still goes through the hiring process by the city manager.
That's right.
Yeah. So you tell us, come back and tell us what you want, how you want to do that title.
I thought we always had that ability, Matthew.
The finance director is what did harm to the city manager. You guys have the ability to.
We can come back to that one as well.
That's the word of point, because I looked at that too and thought the same thing.
Well, if we are misunderstanding it, then we need to clarify if somebody else is not, not sitting at the table, not going to understand.
This gentleman will bring up, offer your loans for your consideration next.
Okay. Thank you. Let's look at the city attorney, Section 3. Officers, departments, and agencies, and all of their employees.
That's a dramatic thing we can look at.
These areas that were added, A, B, and C, that was from legal as well, put that in. That's all good.
Yeah, and Section, and Paragraph A.
Yep.
Indivisible. Anything else on the city attorney?
Are you the city prosecutor? You're the city attorney as well?
He is, he is an attorney.
Then what are you?
He's a prosecutor.
You're the prosecutor? The city attorney shall act as the city prosecutor. So has the council appointed you as the city prosecutor then?
Do you have a question that I'll just give to you?
Thanks for my. So then, yes, Section 4, Creation of Departments, any concern on that?
Wait, just so I understand the city, sorry, I want to make sure I understand the city attorney thing. So, the council has appointed you as the city attorney.
Correct. The firm.
It's firm.
You and Joe, and so then separately, though, the council has appointed the firm to be the city prosecutor. So do you supervise that? Do you would, under the?
In practice, no.
Okay, because it says the city.
Because they have a direct, so they have a separate contract, I believe, or appointed directly by the council.
That's right.
I don't know if in the code.
We can look at that, just make sure that's clarified on that.
You should just be clear about that.
Yeah, okay, we can come back.
Considering he was on city council, right? As your dad. I mean, I would think that that has to be.
Conflict dangerous?
Yeah.
Only during. We did say that.
There are multiple, and this is very normal, all cities everywhere have multiple. There are other attorneys, for example, we do not refer to the city. There's a separate bond council that represents the city. Generally speaking, the city attorney tries to keep a general overview of what's going on. But when the council contracts directly to another attorney for a specific scope of work, we don't. I guess supervisor would be the wrong word, in this current situation.
We can, we'll make sure we look at that one specifically on that.
So that's covered in here, it doesn't, it says the city council can hire other attorneys. I think it's providing that ability. So the city attorney will often also approve contracts with other organizations, right? So if there's, if there's some specialty, if the city attorney doesn't go and deal with, they might go to an outside council, right?
Yeah.
And so that happens, I believe this is providing an alternative where the council can say, all right, in this car value area, we're going to bring in another firm. Think that's similar to what's going on right now with the city having a separate bond council, so the city having a separate prosecution council. I think, in my reading of this, it generally consists of.
We can talk to.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
So Section 4, Creation of Departments, anything there? Just question the city manager on the merit system to be established, that's a pretty standard system for the cities. Anything else on Article 4? Suzanne? We're good?
They were asking a lot of questions.
No.
Because I hear you guys.
We're just running through them, so.
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, so then let's just move on to Article 5, Appointed Boards and Commissions.
No, I'd just like to say that we're about halfway through the charter right now, so again, two hours into it.
A lot of the hard parts, too.
Yeah, well, we got the big one coming up, and we maybe we won't do that one.
Yeah, I think we should stop right before that one.
Yeah.
We're starting to look a little peeved here.
I have.
Sunny?
I have something on B.
Okay.
Each board and commission shall consist of five members unless otherwise provided in our charter. Right now, several of our boards and commissions have seven members. And I personally believe seven is a good number because if you have five, then meeting a quorum could be tough. Sometimes it could limit. And seven has worked, I think, for many, 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 many years.
Matthew, do we know why that changed? Or was that? That number?
Is there any circumstance where five, is there any circumstance where five would be better? I said you can always make it, you can always make it seven through ordinance, it states that here, right? So I'm just wondering if we make it a mandatory seven, I wouldn't know enough, I've never served on a municipal or committee for the city, but.
Matthew, do you know on that one?
What if we, what if we just changed it to at least five members?
I think they just added the number five.
Right, that's right, we said the number.
What was it?
They spelled out five and then it just.
No, but he was talking about having seven.
Why five?
This was important.
Would that be like a minimum of, a minimum of five or?
I like that, just saying at least five.
I would agree with that, I like a minimum of five.
Okay.
Sometimes it's hard to do with several visions, that way if you can only get five, you can have five, if you get seven, great.
Yeah, minimum.
Concerned with. Just from another city charter. So I don't think that's the reason.
Minimum.
It's not an intention to change what the city is currently doing, it's just what's in the charter draft.
I would be concerned that if we put a minimum of five, then all of a sudden it just becomes, well, we only need five.
So that's what I was suggesting, what you're suggesting is, five is not good. Seven is the minimum we should have, through your experience. And my question was, well, is, can you foresee a circumstance where five might be? 99 out of 100 times, seven is necessary, is there, this covers that one time that. Is there, this covers that one time that five is necessary? And what I'm hearing from you folks is that that's really not the case.
What I can tell you is some boards and commissions, like, it depends on what you do. If you're doing a physical review of proposals, and you need a board member who's an electrician, and a board member who's a plumber, and you have all of those, it's hard in a small city to come up with that many people. Sometimes it's really hard.
On the property boards in a small city, it's also hard because you just have somebody. And if you have a five-person, for example, a five-person board of adjustment, and one person has a conflict, now you have a problem.
Why don't we look at that? We can change that number if necessary, because there may be a reason that we need to have five as the minimum.
You have that before.
So the charter doesn't speak to the qualifications of those folks? Is that correct?
I don't think they do get interviewed.
But does it say they have to be residents of Litchfield Park?
To be universal?
Yes, it does. Okay, I can't remember reading that. And because once they establish the board commissions, a lot of time they put those technical, professional requirements, but that's not in the charter, the technical requirements, to be up. Like if you're designing people.
You want to make it general and not technical.
We definitely do, we definitely do. Yeah, and the question was, is there ever a time when seven is a problem, or five? And I'm saying it just gets hard if you put too many technical requirements on it. So as long as we don't.
Do we add the word minimum?
We'll talk about that, right?
Okay, five minimum, or five to seven, depending on what.
Yeah, okay.
We like seven.
I have a question, why it's in here? What is, if it's always been seven on all of our.
It's just the starter draft.
Oh.
One of the other cities.
There was a hint of six, and then a lot of. Seven, and then go back. It should be a seven.
Yeah, seven.
Yes, okay, got it.
So moving through that, C, D.
Forgive me, I want to make sure, I'll get, real quick, though. We can make it seven here, but using this verbiage, in the event, in some circumstance, that they needed a board that was only five, because there aren't enough, there isn't enough talent, they could do that through ordinance?
I think it says that.
Is that, whatever that is?
Unless otherwise provided by our law or ordinance.
So you could make it seven, like Sunny, because that should be our norm. But in the event you couldn't find them, we wouldn't be hamstringing the government.
We're going to go back to that.
That's a really good point. The ordinance could change it to five.
With an ordinance, okay, very good.
That's the kind of flexibility, I think.
So now the ordinance would require, like a regular ordinance, right?
It would take a charter member, when it says seven, I think.
No, no, the charter says you can change it by order wise, provided by ordinance.
Um, the one thing that, this is more tiki-taki, but law, ordinance, and ordinance is a law, so. I mean, that's the premise that we're going for, right? So one thing, I just want to point out on this, this is a problem with, I think, the problem with the fact that you got that last set of track changes showing, is it's causing too much weight to be on some words. There's a whole bunch of stuff in here that was previously removed from other charters, that was written, you know, by staff. Some was written by legal, some wasn't, some was. So I think, I would suggest the first pass through.
Right.
Treat it all like it all can be changed, right? So five, seven, twelve, whatever you want. I wouldn't put, you know, don't put a bunch of weight on that five just because it's in track changes. That's one of, you know, a dozen rounds of track changes.
So it sounds like, yeah, we're leaning towards changing that to seven to make it consistent with how we currently do it, but leaving the languages that says.
Gives you the flexibility.
If the council has difficulty, by ordinance, they can change it to five.
That's my question. Ordinance is different than just a council motion, right?
Oh, yeah.
Is this the kind of.
If it says ordinance, it needs to be the form of an ordinance.
Right.
It needs to say ordinance on the actual.
Right, so, right, so that means it has to be noted twice, right?
So that's in code, which is what you call it.
Yeah. Yeah. So is there some, is there a way of doing it by just a city council motion in a meeting?
Sure. So another thing is, you're raising an issue, so the two readings for an ordinance, that's in the city code, right? That's not a date law, it's not. And so you, I mean, that's, I don't know if that's, I don't mean to send you in other directions, but I don't know if that's something you want to put in your charter to make it a permanent rule? If that's something that you need out, like the council kind of adds stuff like that? If you want, so you're saying that, is there a way to make this so we don't need two readings to change that rule? Well, I mean, the two readings law itself is going to be less permanent than what it is in the charter. Because that's just the city council's responsibility. Oh, it's going to be in the charter. If it's going to be in the charter, too, then, right, so that's.
I'm just seeing, I'm just foreseeing a circumstance where we can't get enough people to run for the, one of the boards. And we need to get it going, because we've got projects backing up over here. Maybe it's our big stuff going on here. And we need to have five people on there, or seven people on there, rather than having to introduce it this month, and then read it the second month, and then vote on it. That's the one for a lifetime.
You could do within that rule, is you could declare an emergency. Because there's an exception to the two votes for any emergency, right? You could say, hey, it's backing up, and so.
We could build that in there on that, Kenny, that's not, not.
Yeah, that's all, that's all, in the ordinance approval. You can always declare an emergency, and it takes effect immediately, and it only requires one hearing.
How about just wrapping up C, D, E, and F, and G? Anybody see anything?
Well, I'm hearing five.
Okay.
C, D, E, and F. Five.
Yep.
I can see the last, you sent, the old paragraph copied, and here's Article Two, Section fourteen. But the last three sentences were deleted in that section.
Michael, can you talk a little louder for this guy over here?
I can't hear you.
Sorry, I was talking to myself there. So Article Two, Section fourteen has very similar language, but in that section, the last three sentences were deleted. Is that what?
Article Two, which?
Article, Article Two, Section fourteen.
So that's the absence of council members?
Absent terminate membership.
Yes, so the last three, so it says the action will commence immediately and does not require council approval. If all conditions are met, and that has struck out in fourteen.
In Article Two, Section fourteen.
Yes, from previous.
And we're comparing that to.
So Mike is comparing Article Two, Section fourteen, to Article Five, Section One, Paragraph C.
And what's missing from which one?
One has.
I don't know if it doesn't.
One has this, the action will commence immediately and does not require a board or committee action. If all conditions of the section are met. One does, has, one was redlined in Article Five, included in the main slot.
So they're inconsistent.
They're inconsistent.
Well, so we're saying a board member on a commission, or a board member or a commission member, it takes effect immediately. The section you're referring to in Section fifteen is actually a vacancy of a council member. Right? So it's a difference between a council member being vacant and losing office.
Versus a board.
Versus an appointed board member.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I'm okay with that.
There's just a board member there.
It's just a no board.
Well, but I mean.
Whatever.
Yeah.
You better come to the next meeting.
But your point is good, which I think in both of these cases, it says the vacancy that's approved by either the City Council or the Board of, you know, it has to be an approved vacancy. The approval should be in the minutes, so that a member can't come back and say, I was absent three times, but I was, you know, Joe said it was okay. That's not formal approval of the vacancy. And so I think it says in here that that approval of your vacancy from the meeting has to be reflected in the minutes. Doesn't it say that somewhere?
It says regular, without the consent of the board or committee duly recorded in the minute.
Yes, yes. So you don't say to a board member, you missed three meetings, you're out, and it takes effect immediately, and we're not going to have any discussion about this. The person says, well, wait a minute, those were all excused absences. Well, they have to point back at the minutes to show that they were approved absences, right?
You're only forcing them off, basically like a no show, no call, no employee.
Right.
That kind of thing. If they have an excuse, of course they don't fire them, they don't throw them off. But if it's just no excuse, they're just not coming, then they're rejected immediately.
And that excuses the court immediately. Okay.
It's recorded in both.
Yeah, both cases.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are we good on that?
What letter are we on that?
We're on, we're almost to Article, um.
Six.
Where are we going to stop?
Which I think we ought to, well.
We're going to need Paige a lot on that one.
Yeah, let's start, let's stop at six, by now.
Yeah, Paige needs to.
We would need a motion to adjourn.
No.
Oh, wait a minute.
City Manager.
City Manager.
Could I ask a question, sir? Uh, one, there is another item on the agenda after the, that's what I was going to say.
The approval of the.
Actually, I was going to say, for me personally, I'm actually, hopefully flying to Georgia tomorrow, and I'm going to be there for a week. So I will not be here for the meeting next Tuesday.
Okay.
So if you have anything you want to ask me, I'd be glad to advise you. But just to know that upfront. And again, there is an item on the agenda after this, so if you want to address that at this time, that postcard, if not, Mr. Chairman, you can certainly take it back to another meeting.
Do you need direction on producing the postcard tonight? You don't?
Here, let me share, let me see.
Well, we haven't seen it, so let's just have it.
Chair and vice chair.
Yeah.
I've already prepared, I've prepared the postcard. Maria will bring it up on the screen for you.
Okay.
Let me answer your question.
Maria, can you zoom in on that? Or can everybody see it? Just to give you a little bit of background on this, typically when you do a charter like this, it is required to do a publicity pamphlet. And with the amount of pages we're, um, believe that this charter is going to be, this is the most cost-effective way to get the information to the voters without having to print forty-seven hundred copies of the publicity pamphlet.
Right.
On the backside of this, Maria, if you could turn it over, it lists all of the dates that it will be published in the Arizona Republic. There's also a QR code for our website. It lists the city website. They can email us, call us, or come to City Hall.
Terry, I have a question. What would they come to you for?
If they wanted a paper copy of it.
Okay, but not to have input?
Absolutely not.
Should that say that on there, you know?
I could add, if you'd like.
Not put that on it yet, or? When do, whenever we have to.
What's your timeline, what's your timeline on this? When do we need to approve this for you to have it sent out?
Um, January twenty-sixth.
I think we have a little time. I don't think we need to, I think we need to add it to.
We can just keep this, can we keep this on the agenda for now, and then?
Sure.
I moved to table that item until the next meeting.
Okay.
Who moved?
Second. Seconded.
Kenny.
Kenny, Kenny Jones moved it, and then Sunny seconded. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that'll. Any other discussion?
So we've put a lot of things to, let me just ask a procedural question and how we want to handle this. So we've talked a lot about, let's table this, let's table that. Our, is the procedure then to continue going through the charter as is, and then at the end, we discuss all the things that we want to discuss, and have the input from legal and City Manager and everything like that? Is that how we're envisioning this?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
As quickly as it's gone, I think that would be terrific.
I agree. I think it's going well.
Does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Removed.
Sunny?
I second.
Will? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.